Who's our sponsor?
Okay, go ahead.
It is 6:35 to open up this planning board work session after the course meeting. I'd like to have a little class of members. And we have Mike Avon absent, Rhonda Bishop vice chair here, Johnny Ranlett here, Paul Wilson, Pat Roach, John Kelly, Bob Dragon, alternate absent, Dick Lewis here, Ray Gosney, Secman's representative, alternate, not here. And at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any comments?
Correction, you said Pelosi was here.
Right. Any administrators that matters?
Not at this point.
You can announce any correspondence?
I do have some correspondence. I will pass it out now and perhaps we can discuss it afterwards so we don't hold up our guest. This is a letter that was received today. And y'all can take a look at it. And I just have the tax map just for general purposes to show the zones. I have to hand out my handouts.
That's it for correspondence?
Yeah.
Reports, Boris Luckman, Dick Lewis?
Not a whole lot. The board's getting into a busy time of the year, starting the budget review, so that'll start taking up some significant time. I guess just one kind of minor land use issue. We did have someone come in for the Boris Luckman last meeting regarding some logging up at the Teddy Mountain Highway, just some issues with having good and proper access in existing right of way that he has. So the board may need to get involved in that a little bit. That's about it.
Some board adjustments?
They did meet on Tuesday, this past Tuesday. They had not had any applications through the summer months to grant a special exception and related variance for 20 Merrill Street for the conversion of a barn to two units of multiple unit housing. I'm sorry, one unit of multiple unit housing, two bedrooms. And there was also a special exception approved for a sign out at Flowersmith's. And on Teddy Mountain Highway, there's a new tenant coming in, so there'll be a small roof sign. But they were both fairly simple and without any controversy, so that was nice.
Thank you. And nothing to report on the PV water sewer? From the Rivas River Local Advisory Committee, nothing? And Plymouth Regional Emergency Management Committee?
I haven't met someone's report, but I was wondering if we should bring up maybe security cameras being bolted on the outside of the building in light of what happened?
Maybe Mr. Lewis can take note of that.
viable suggestion?
Yeah, certainly something that has been done other public buildings. It might be up to the board.
They're not as expensive as they used to be.
No.
Yeah, they're very reasonable. You get a DVR.
Yep.
The card drive just stores like $10 a video on it.
Particularly, we've had, you know.
You guys have had cars.
The next time somebody skateboards over the hood of my car, maybe we'll find out who it is.
Yeah, you guys have had cars vandalized and now you didn't run. So, you know, there's a lot of pedestrians. Pedestrian gets hit by a car, it's a serious situation.
How many times has this happened in the last 20 years?
Well, the cars have been vandalized out here plenty of times.
Have they?
Yeah, the town doesn't park their cars here. The town, two towns vehicles, they pretty much to the police station because they don't want to be in here overnight. But that's not overnight, windows get smashed on. Windows got smashed the last time the cars are overnight.
That's busy. It's well, the historical, the old courthouse historic, historical society sign got ripped off last spring.
Right.
That's missing, so.
Just an idea.
I'll bring that to the board.
Thank you.
And telephoto report?
Well, very, very busy with the outcome of the last planning board meeting, the site plan approval at our Teddy Mountain. And there's just a lot of things happening. 149 Main Street, we'll be meeting on that on the 18th. And it's getting, it's starting to get busy. There's a lot of paperwork, so stay tuned.
What's happening on 49 Main Street?
The business incubator, the old Richelsons.
Yeah.
So we'll be having a look at that.
All right, that brings us to new business, Steve Powell from the PVSPW and SD board member, will give a stormwater management overview presentation.
I just want to thank Steve for coming. He and I have been trying to get this organized for, what, six months now? I'm too busy, we're too busy, he's too busy, he's gone. So we really appreciate you taking time out of your day after work to come over. And Steve is going to give us a presentation on stormwater management, which is his forte. And as you can see from his affiliations, he does know what he's talking about. So hopefully the technology will work. I guess if you want to go up to the podium or stand around there, do you need me to hold it? Do you think it's going to stay?
I think it'll be fine.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you and welcome.
All right, well, I appreciate it. I stood you up at least once, I think.
That's okay.
And we wanted to find time.
It's happened before.
And we need some time for conversation and everything. Just, you all see me on TV all the time with water sewer, and I see you on TV all the time. I know everybody, Pat, I guess, and met everybody, so please, we're the chance to be here. And as Sharon said, I'm a career water quality person. I was the founding director of the Center for the Environment here at PSU and was here for a number of years. And had the opportunity to serve on the New Hampshire Stormwater Commission, which was started in 2009. It was groundwater commission, sustainability commission, two, three others started about the same time to try to look at the big picture of these various issues. And in fact, they did come together and spend some time trying to get themselves integrated as well. And so it felt like the commission went on and on forever, but it was a fascinating process and it was very political. And there's some stuff here that I think, that I hope will be interesting to you. I suspect, I'm not going to really tell you anything that you don't know, but I hope that I'm going to weave it together in a way that may make you think a little bit differently about things. And as I sometimes say, I hope I make you squirm, because there's some squirming to be done, but there's great opportunities here, too. And so this may be, I'd love to think this was the first conversation, but we'll see, we'll see where we go from there. So I typically go fast, and so if I'm going too fast, help me, and feel free to ask a question anytime, anytime you want to along the way. So, this is a diagram out of the DES Water Resources Primer. The information is down there on the bottom, which is really a fine document, but the bottom line is that 80% or 90% of water quality impairments are caused by stormwater. And just to be clear on this, I mean, when I was in school 100 years ago, we were talking about non-point source pollution. Well, in reality, stormwater is the new non-point source pollution phrase, right? So that's, that's the issue. Not pipes, you have stuff that's flowing across the ground, and it's pretty obvious why that's happening, but we'll sneak peek on that here for a little bit. So a brief history of stormwater management. In the past, we treated stormwater, which really does precipitation, of course, running across the ground. We treat a stormwater as a waste product. And so we paved everything in sight and created runoff. We laced the runoff with salt and oil and fertilizer and everything else we could think of, heavy metals. We funneled it to drains, we put it in pipes, we accelerated the flow, we dumped all those pollutants into the service waters, we eroded the stream banks, we buried the fish habitat in sediments, and we caused flooding downstream. Well, that's not in the past, that's what we're still doing. And there's the issue, and it doesn't have to be that way. And ultimately, that's, that's what I'm here to talk about, is new ways we can do things that in fact are cheaper and work better. And who doesn't like that? So there are major economic reasons to care about this. This happens to be a toxic cyanobacteria bloom, which means that if your dog drinks that, the dog dies. And all around the world, cattle and people occasionally, and pets die from this stuff, and it is now here in New Hampshire. It was a toxic cyanobacteria bloom in Lake Winnipesaukee on 4th July weekend, two years ago, right when everybody was there. Not good. So, and so my rhetorical question to you is, when Lewin Lake looks like that, what happens to the property values out there? And if something happens to the property values like that, what happens to the tax base that we get from Lewin Lake? So it matters. It matters to the people that live there. It matters to you if your dog dies from drinking that, and it matters to the tax base. So it does matter. Sure.
I mean, not that I would want to see that, but how would you go about treating it? Or is it essentially very?
Once you get there, once you get there, you really, it's almost impossible to come back.
Too rad case.
And isn't that true for almost any? Prevention is way cheaper and way more effective than trying to fix the problem later. So here's the increase in chloride from a particular New Hampshire water supply. I happen to be familiar with some of these data here. In the 1950s, the amount of chlorine in the water was three or four or five parts per million. It's 200 today. And the line up there at 250 is the EPA limit for potability. So when that water supply gets there, and you know, choose your number, maybe it's going to happen in 2018, or maybe it's going to happen in 2025, but when it gets there, that water supply can't be used anymore. Guess where that water supply is? It's us. And stormwater runoff, and the salt that's in it from, because we've got a salt to deal with, with road ice and things like that.
Is that mostly source of chlorides is salt?
That's right.
Yeah.
And obviously, in this particular case, the interstate is part of the issue.
Right.
Of course, we had, whatever we had there, 50 acres, and then they put the interstate right through the middle of our wellhead protection zone.
And they use so much salt on the state highway.
That's right.
I drive 93 every day, it's amazing the salt they use.
That's right. But there are solutions to these things. And we're in conversation with DOT about it, but you know, it's an interesting challenge. Another reason, you recall when the proposal to widen I-93 came along, well, it turned out there was so much chloride in some of the streams in London Dairy and Dairy and places like that. In fact, on the previous slide, I showed that 250 parts per million was the limit for drinkability. There are streams down there with 2,000 and 3,000 parts per million chloride. There are estuaries inland, because there's, you know, around the Mall of New Hampshire, for example, that sort of thing. And so in fact, EPA threatened to develop a moratorium in five communities, saying, if you don't solve this problem, you can't do any more development, you can't permit anything else. That gets people's attention. And you know, when you see flooding, which we seem to have plenty of these days, everybody wants to say it's climate change. Well, I would suggest that in fact, if we hadn't paved the whole darn landscape, the runoff would be different, and maybe it's not climate change at all. Maybe it's us doing stuff locally.
Various services, yeah.
You know, when we, when we repave and rebuild Highland Street and put curbs everywhere, we're just zooming that water right down into the Baker River and causing flooding right here in the Pembe. You know, it's us. And again, so what's the economic cost of imperviousness? That's the key, it's imperviousness. And so imperviousness means runoff, and it improves impaired water quality, causes flooding, and increased infrastructure maintenance. I mean, it erodes bridges, it contaminates your sewer, your water district, and bottom line is, property owners pay the costs. It's built into the tax base to fix these problems. And just one example, we just did finish the $6.5 million upgrade required by DES to our sewage treatment plant. So our old, our design capacity is 700,000 gallons per day. Our peak flows are 2 and 3 million gallons per day. Where's that coming from? It's not the students at PSU. It's the imperviousness in the latter shed of the water sewer plant. $6.5 million divided by the small number of people in this town, that's a big burden on every person and every taxpayer here. And there are solutions. So the issue, the phrase that everybody uses is stormwater management, which means that we accept the fact that we're going to generate stormwater and we want to manage it. In reality, if we thought about imperviousness reduction, we'd get away from that mindset. I mean, our mindset is just wrong. We think, well, we're going to have to have stormwater management, let's think about ways to get the water into the ground, which is where it's at.
I don't disagree with you, but isn't another part of the solution of that 700,000 to 2 million peak is going to be inflow and infiltration?
No, right, right. And you know, we've made some progress on that. You know, we've taken out, we did some storm drains over here on Russell Street. We took out 30,000 gallons. Out of 2 or 3 million, it didn't do us much good. You know, and there's, you know, so there's that kind of thing, there's storm drains, I mean roof drains, go feeding directly into the sewage treatment plant, and there are other things we can do. I mean, bottom line is, it'd be great to get the water into the groundwater, you know, rainfall into the groundwater, keep the flow of the river, you know, provides for drinking water, if you happen to have a well, all sorts of reasons. So impervious cover, this is a study from the UNH Stormwater Center, actually Dari Sasan, if you know him, did a study similar to this when I was still here at PSU. And you know, we know what it is. I mean, it's rooftops, it's roads, it's parking, the vast majority in fact is parking lot base. And you know, we, you have some control over that. And I'm going to give you some ideas on how we can deal with those things. So the phrase, the end of pipes and ponds is a phrase that is actually a workshop that the UNH Stormwater Center puts on. And I've done some work with them, had a couple of research grants running through there, and worked with them on Stormwater Commission. But the issue is, we need to think about a new way to do things. And as soon as we start putting the pipes in to control that stormwater, you know, there's, there's the issue, thinking back to that history slide that I had a few minutes ago. And so the phrase I'm going to use a number of times here is low impact development, and I know you know that phrase certainly, and basically just think of it as infiltration, ways to deal with stormwater where you infiltrate the water rather than pipe it somewhere else. The best low impact development stormwater methods are, don't generate the stormwater, get it right in the ground, treat it right there. And so kind of, kind of stepping from simple to more complex, I mean, the simplest one you can think of perhaps is a rain barrel. Well, you take the water off your roof and run it in a rain barrel rather than have it run across the ground and walk into the stream or onto your parking lot, and then you use that water for good purposes. Rain garden here, this is actually a rain garden that the New Hampshire Lakes Association built right at the boat launch at Lake Wakiwan, that takes water from the road that they're in the background and infiltrates it. As I took this picture, I'm standing right on the bank of the lake. And so the water goes in there, fills up this little swell area for short term, drains quickly, infiltrates into the water, and it keeps all of the junk from that, from that roadway from getting into the lake right there. Pretty simple, looks pretty good, doesn't cost very much. And here's one of the issues, everybody goes, geez, this is, this is new stuff, and can we do this? In reality, it looks great. And it costs less, even so, UNH has done all sorts of studies on this stuff. It costs less to build this kind of stuff rather than putting pipes everywhere. It infiltrates the water, and it's actually easier to maintain. Now, of course, one of the challenges is, you talk to, you know, your typical DPW person, and they've not actually maintained anything like this before, and so they don't really want to do it because it's new. So we're willing to do maintenance on the high impact development stuff, but we're not willing to do the cheaper maintenance on the low impact. So you know, there's one of the challenges that we've got to overcome. But this, this one right here in the lower left, I don't know if you can read this, this is a classic one right here. Here's normally what you see in a parking lot, a raised grass area. But here's, here's the way that we really ought to do it. Let's have it be a depression and take the runoff from the parking lot, rather than deflect the runoff and cause it to go someplace else.
But if that drain go though, it's in there?
Well, that is an overflow drain, so.
Just if it's a hydrant.
Yeah, so maybe this handle is an inch drain, but if it goes more than that, then you, you overflow. But of course, if you're infiltrating the first means, that's where most of the contaminants are at, and the stuff later is a little bit cleaner, so. And this time to think, you know, to me, this looks great. Why not, why not do that sort of thing?
Now, is that a raised curve around that grassy area, or is that flat to the?
This one over here?
No.
Or this one?
Both of them.
This, this is a raised curve right here, and so you know, there's somewhere in here there's a, there's a mechanism to get in there in this particular, you know, some kind of little break to get in there. But you don't even need to have the curve. Firstly, I would do it without the curve, because it's just something more to maintain and have the snowplow.
The only thing I'm thinking about is that, you know, people do run into ramp posts and things like that. And if somebody could land themselves right in that, I'll bet you it'll happen more than once.
Well, I mean, there are, obviously, it depends on where, you know, where you're putting it, and you've got to think about those things, no question about it.
Yeah.
And here's, here's one that is a favorite of mine. Instead of having a storm drain right here that drains to the Pembejiwase River, you put a tree in there and filter all the water on the way through. You know, I mean, it's just a great way to deal with it, and it looks good. And another one of my favorites, we have papers all over the landscape, and people compact everything as much as they possibly can, and then they bed it in sand, and it basically becomes impervious. If you bed it in pea gravel instead, no extra cost, maybe even less cost, the water goes just like that. There's a place over, a boat launch where I seen, actually, these guys installed, it was a boat launch that collected water from a large area and just ran, all the water just ran right down the boat launch. They put this in, and I was there on a rainstorm a couple of months ago, and the water was all coming in, hits, hits the grass paper, it was, it was gravel, and boom, the water was gone.
So that's like a last work of pavement?
Yeah, yeah. And this is actually a, an emergency exit, there's a doorway, an emergency exit from a dorm, from a building at a university. It never gets used. Why would I pave it? Why bother to pave it? I mean, that's going to work just fine. You know, it's simpler, it's cheaper to maintain, you just mow right over it, and it works, it works great. So reminding everybody what, that most of the imperviousness is roads, driveways, and parking lots, then the question is, can rain gardens or something like that solve the stormwater problem for the Steeplegate Mall? That's what that is. I don't know how it's in Google Earth, you take a little words out there, but anyway. So there's the Steeplegate Mall, half a mile in diameter, paved. So how do we deal with that magnitude of problem? And there is in fact an answer. Oh, just one slide ahead of myself. So the regulatory hammer, here's the main mall, and then again, it's, I think it's bigger than the Steeplegate Mall in fact. And the regulatory hammer came down on the main mall because of pollution in streams right there. And the businesses at the main mall today are paying $3,000 an acre of imperviousness per year to mitigate those problems. That hits your attention when that kind of, when that kind of thing happens. Now, is that going to happen in Plymouth anytime soon? Maybe not. But you know, there are ways that we can still deal with the issues here, and maybe one really creative one if we want to be really forward thinking. We'll see how, how it goes on that and maybe again, a longer term conversation. So here's a picture of porous asphalt, which I think everybody knows it's out there, but you probably haven't seen it very often. There's the, there's an installation at, in Greenland, New Hampshire, down by 95, and it's a, I think it's a target at Alows, and there's a, half of the parking lot is porous asphalt, and half of the parking lot is regular asphalt, because UNH was involved, and they kind of did it as an experiment.
It's an extension of Plymouth, too.
Pardon?
It's one of Plymouth's, on Fairgrounds Road, the.
Yeah, we're starting to recommend.
Yeah, it's impervious, you should go see it, it's nice. The new citizen housing just opened.
Really? Maybe I don't even need to be here, you guys are so.
It's a small, little piece of the bigger puzzle, but at least it's starting.
For the, for the television audience, you know, there's, in a rainstorm, on the left, there's porous asphalt with no water on it at all, regular asphalt on the right, and all kinds of water, and therefore you've got salted, and it's got stormwater runoff. And here's one thing that we have not done much of, but at the main mall, they have the frontage road at the main mall in South Portland is a two-thirds of a mile of porous asphalt. You drive down that road in the rain, there's no road spread.
Yeah, that's nice.
When we get to the point of actually doing it on the interstate, we're going to save lives. And again, DOT engineers, they haven't quite got there yet, but there's no reason why not.
How is the wear on that porous compared to the?
Pardon?
How's the, the wear?
Well.
Does it last a lot longer or a lot shorter?
Let me give you this, and Sharon actually has a sheet that talks about myths of this stuff, because you're, you're, in fact, I've had plenty of conversation with engineers, where they say, well, geez, we're putting the water into the pavement, it's not going to last in the winter time. But the bottom line is, the base is set up so that it takes the water and infiltrates it. So if you go to the Greenland site, that wellmark, Lowe's and Target, it's been there four or five years, you'll see the regular asphalt, all cracked and broken up, you'll see the porous asphalt, looks perfect. Because you get the water out of there, it doesn't sit on top and cause the freezing thought problems. And you don't put any sand on it, you don't put any salt on it, it saves costs and time, it really is amazing stuff. Now, and the other thing about it is, if you, if you get the water drained that way rather than trying to pipe it somewhere, you can avoid all the pipes, and you guys do know this because you do primitive project like that, it actually is cheaper to install the porous than it is to do it the regular way. The problem is, the porous, the actual surface costs more. And so when somebody sees that, they go, no, no, I don't want to do that, because they don't price the whole project.
Right, right.
And so we've got to get past that one. And I've been told by folks in the business that the reason, the problem is, to do a batch of porous, you've got to shut the plant down, I mean, basically porous is the same as regular, you stay out the fons.
Right.
So you've got to shut the plant down and clean it, and do a special batch. We can get to the point where we're using porous regularly, and that comes back to planning boards all over the place. So the cost is going to come way down, and then you avoid the infrastructure, and it's the same cost. Everybody's going to save money, and it's going to, you know, it's going to really work super well.
Is there any grants for, for the towns to try to help them out?
Some of the projects that I, in fact, this project right here was done on an IRA grant. But, well, actually, you raise an interesting point, and I had actually, I'd thought of it that way. There's no reason that a porous asphalt parking lot wouldn't qualify for a DES 319 grant, for example, to solve a particular water quality problem. And yet in fact, I gave a version of this talk to the Lakes Region Planning Commission Board a couple of months ago, and proposed that, well, slightly ahead of myself, I'm going to talk about water utilities here in a second, proposed the idea to protect water quality in Lake Winnipesaukee, that we think about getting towns together to do regional stormwater utility, and they love the idea. And that's exactly where we could do, get the 319 grants. But again, once developers understand what it is, and planning boards regularly ask them to look at it, they're going to realize, wait a minute, less maintenance cost, it's going to last a lot longer, it's cheaper to install, you know, why wouldn't we do this? And again, just to make my point, the, there are engineers out there who'll say, well, geez, no, we've never done this before, and it isn't going to break out, well, what we do now doesn't work. So why, you know, why are we worried about whether porous is going to work or not, when in fact, we've got demonstrations that it does work? So low impact development minimizes runoff, it looks good, it costs less to sustain, to install, and it usually costs less to maintain. And we've got good data on all this from, from the UNH Stormwater Center. And here's one example of the Stormwater Center project that they did, and it was in Gringe. And so you can see in the first one what they did, and they priced out conventional versus what they actually did with porous asphalt, and they saved $50,000 and 6% on the project. And that's very typical. In fact, the, the one I was talking about down in Greenland, they saved 10% on that project. 10% reduction in cost. And so the developer was thrilled to be able to do that. So back to the Stormwater Commission for a second. So stormwater is the symptom of the disease. Let's treat the disease by dealing with imperviousness. So there's, the issue is imperviousness, and we just need to think a new way. And again, I'm just so thrilled that you guys have permitted a project, though, right? I mean, a porous asphalt project. Again, let's, let's think about ways to end the traditional pipe and pond approach, because it just doesn't do what we need to have done, and it costs too much. And we already talked about what LID is in particular. So here's, here's one of the solutions. And so is everybody familiar with a stormwater utility? So a stormwater utility is, is, it is exactly that, it's utility, and it sets a fee based on stormwater runoff. So, and we use imperviousness as the means to do that. And, but most people haven't heard of it, and in fact, I bet you can't tell me where there is one close by, there are actually five in New England, that's it. Nationally, depending on whose numbers you look at, they're somewhere between 2,000 and 4,000. and 4,000. And in my view, they are coming. And it's a really good idea that they, that they are coming. And in fact, one thing that I said to the Lakes Region Planning, once, once towns actually understand what a stormwater utility is, every town is gonna want one. 'Cause they just make so much sense. And so, so I'm gonna conclude with that idea here, on why that, why that makes sense. So operates like a, like a water sewer district, it's funded on a fee on imperviousness, that means that those people who are generating the stormwater are paying a fee for that. But what it means is, if you take the stormwater management out of your, your town budget, and replace it with the fee generated by people who actually pay for it, you reduce property taxes, and then the people who actually generate it are the ones who pay the fee. So it's fair, and while reducing property taxes for, you know, your general, uh, your control board. And personally, I'm a huge believer in a dedicated fund approach to, to budgeting anyway. And if you think about being the, the DPW director, he never knows how much he's gonna get from year to year, so how do you plan long-term? This sets up, you know, a certainty for it, so he has an idea of what's coming, and he can actually plan ahead to do things more efficiently. So again, uh, one of the findings from the, from the Stormwater Commission seems simple, but it took us a long time to get there, that indeed, property owners are responsible for stormwater coming from their property. Uh, and then here was the recommendation that I think was really forward-thinking from the Stormwater Commission, and that is to create a mandatory statewide stormwater utility, so that everybody has, is on the same playing field. And so that recommendation is in our final report, and in fact, we did create a group to, to draft legislation to move in this direction, and it, it did not go forward in the most, in the last legislative session. Uh, but here's the deal. If you create a mandatory statewide utility, the way we suggested it happen is that the fees from a statewide system, if anybody was in that statewide stormwater utility, would go back to DES, and get allocated as however they got allocated. However, any community that wanted to start their own stormwater utility, they'd keep the fees local. And doesn't that make sense? And so there's the incentive for individual communities to create a stormwater utility, or a local, or a regional one, in the case, you know, the example of, of Lake One of Pasaki. And so the advantage then is, you've got a fair distribution of the cost, it provides an incentive. Now, here's the deal, think about this for a second. If your fee is based on your imperviousness, and you're putting a porous asphalt parking lot that's not impervious, you just got rid of your fee. But what better thing could you have than an opt-out fee, where if you do the right thing, you get rid of the fee? John?
What about, uh, past construction, like houses and stuff like that? That, that, they're hung because it probably costs a dollar or two to rip up their driveway and put that.
Well, you can, there's imperviousness, yeah, there's imperviousness, and then there's imperviousness. So for example, if you have your roof drain, uh, you know, your gutters go through a pipe that then runs across your driveway and down into the local stream, your roof is impervious and it's contributing to the issue, and you would be assessed a stormwater fee. If however, you take that pipe and, and run it into a dry well, you've just disconnected your imperviousness, and you've gotten rid of that part of your fee.
I had an interesting experience, because I've, I've been trying to find rain barrels, and it's almost an impossibility to find a rain barrel in this part of the country, and then they cost about 100, $200.
The, uh, the one I had actually was, I think it was $35, and it came from this, from the high school. And about two springs ago, they were selling rain barrels, and I'm pretty sure it's like 35 bucks. So, I mean, there's, there's an opportunity if, if, you know, the town got behind you, and, and got the high school to do it on an annual basis, you know, buy a new bolt, rather than have to buy them one at a time.
Oh, I finally went along up to the plant, and they had these juice barrels, and converted that into a rain barrel for 15 bucks.
Yeah, there you go.
But it's, it's something that, that, it won't just abound in the local store, and I, I guess what I'm saying, the availability, uh, to the ordinary citizen is not going to be quite as intense as what I might have been to go around, and in fact, I ordered one, and it didn't come back, so I'd send it back, and then, it's quite a, quite an operation, but if you could get it a little bit more accessible, then it would be probably a lot more people would go.
Well, I mean, it's a type of thing, maybe we can work on getting something into the newspaper, educate people so they realize the advantage of a rain barrel, and then maybe brands will carry it or something like that. Or, or again, get the high school involved, so, you know, which is a great opportunity for students.
Right, there's a demand that people carry, yeah.
Right. I mean, it's like, you know, like the, uh, labeling, the stenciling on the storm drains around town, was something that, that restarted out of water and sewer, and then got the elementary school interested. And I think the students really felt there was a lot, and they got a lot out of that one. So let me phrase what I was saying about a few minutes ago a little bit differently, this is a quote from Tom Balisteros down at the UNH Stormwater Center. Taxpayers subsidize traditional development, because the developers go in and do that, and then the cost of dealing with that stormwater is put back into the tax base. Well, that's, you know, to me, that's just not, not the right way to do it. So again, the issue shouldn't be stormwater management, it should be imperviousness reduction. And a couple of, the final boxes in my last slide, when a new parking lot is created with regular asphalt, we need to set that up, or, and I think, yeah, you've set that up, you were the one that approved it, you've set up that parcel to generate stormwater for the next figure of time, 50, 200 years. And in reality, let's look at the options of, of making that porous in some manner. So porous asphalt is one possibility. If you've been up to the new, uh, White Mountain National Forest headquarters, they're using porous pavers, they didn't, they decided not to do asphalt, it's not rocket science, you know, the technology is out there, and it looks good, and, you know, whatever. And so, and the management solution relative to incentives is a stormwater utility, it's a good thing for the town, it's a fair way to pay for stormwater, it reduces property taxes for people who aren't doing, generating the, the stormwater, uh, it's good for the DPW director for long-term planning. It's, it's hard to find a downside to the idea. And so I would be thrilled to continue this conversation with you guys, and, you know, whatever way that makes sense over time, because I'm, I'm a believer.
I just have a question as far as DES and what their thoughts are, and that sort of thing, 'cause I know that they, like, if there's a project coming in, and they're, they come out to view the site, they wanna know how the drain system is, and they pretty much tell you what kinda system that you're gonna need for drainage for that area. But do they have an idea that if you were to use this type of pavement, then they would be eliminated from any drainage?
Well, yeah.
I mean, how do you play that game?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. DES was an integral part of the Stormwater Commission, and, you know, so they have written stormwater manuals that, that I can't, I'm doing some work in Maine and some work in the Hamptons, so I get myself confused between the rules in two states, and so I can't answer this for sure, but there should, the LID method should be in the, in the best management practices allowed by DES.
They have any?
It might, it might take some, a little bit of conversation to be absolutely sure, uh, but it shouldn't be difficult to get that done, because.
I've got the manual, it's in the book.
Hmm, that's good. Yeah. But it is, it is an important consideration, because, I mean, pardon, because individual towns have to adopt whatever DES, DES have in their regs, and so there can be a lifetime there, obviously, to make that, to make that work. So it's a great question. I think it's remarkable.
Steve, how much of this is being implemented in the state right now?
Uh, in terms of stormwater utilities, or in terms of LID stuff?
LID.
LID stuff is, is coming. Let me say it that way. That way, the progress in New York, where there's significant water quality issues around Lake George, and they're doing porous asphalt all over the place around there. Uh, and if you, if you start to look at, you know, like the Greenland site and other sites like that, you're starting to see more and more of those. That progress in New York was actually in Portland last year, and we went on a field trip and the tour, and we're, oh, sorts of these things out there. And so frankly, I think it's gonna be one of these snowball things, where it seems like we're kinda making incremental progress, and then all of a sudden people recognize, well, wow, here are the advantages, it looks good, it costs less, et cetera, and it's just gonna take right off. I really believe it.
Yeah. How are they communicating this with the, you know, the contractors and developers?
That's, that's the challenge. And I think that's why it's gonna go slow, 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 and all of a sudden, bam, it's gonna, it's gonna take right off, I really believe. And it's, I mean, it's, it's a related question to, you know, is DES for sure gonna approve this project without pipes?
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, there may be somebody in DES who isn't quite up to speed, and so you may have to toss the last person supervisor or something like that, to say, don't forget, it is in the regs. You've just never seen it before.
Steve, isn't there a stormwater management conference seminar or something coming up in Greenland this month?
There is, yes. If you're going, let's cut through.
Right, well, I'm not, I, I don't know if I can get up from under the mountains of paper, I was thinking about it. I did have a chance to take one of the introductory courses at the UNH Stormwater Center, it is amazing. And, and the treatments are so simple, it'll blow your mind. And we've lost our connection to, to organic methods of doing that, so. Um, do you want to maybe just, I won't duplicate these, or folks can get them online, but some of these questions and myths I thought would be.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, it actually, it comes back to, to Rhonda's question, where, I mean, I get engineers saying to me, but, sorry, can't read it without, with my glasses. So, you know, porous asphalt isn't gonna work in the Northeast, because you get, you put the lottery in, instead of causing freeze, I've already talked about that one, and again, I've gotten that from engineers many times. Uh, porous asphalt installations are more expensive? No. You know, I'll search data from UNH to say if you avoid all the price, all of the stuff, they're not, and if we can get to the point where it's common, the price is gonna drop even more, so that comes back. Uh, porous asphalt installations are hard to maintain. Here's one that I was worried about, five years ago, I was starting to get into this. The recommendation for maintaining a porous asphalt parking lot is that you vacuum it twice a year. And I said, oh boy, that, that sounds a little complicated, I'm not sure people are gonna like that. Let me get, the, the company that I'm doing a little bit of work for over in Maine, has done all of the Walmart parking lots for the last 15 years, and so I learned, much to my surprise, when I was working at this one, Walmart sweeps their parking lot every night. Instead of sweeping it every night, you think of vacuuming once a month even, it's gonna save them money, and the vacuums are out, the vacuums are relatively common, they're out there. It's not that big a deal. And so they're, and of course, the reason is, you don't wanna get sand down in there, I mean, cars driving out, especially in the wintertime, there's gonna be some sand in there, and it's gonna start to pile up. Well, UNH Stormwater Center did a study where they loaded an asphalt parking, a porous asphalt parking lot with sand, and they estimated that they loaded it with 20 years' worth of sand. And after they did that, it was still more porous than alone. And is it gonna last 20 years? I mean, well, actually, I suppose it might, because it's gonna last longer than regular asphalt, but eventually you are gonna grind it up and, and put a new one on. So, but it still was more porous than alone after 20 years of loading. So, you know, some, some modest maintenance, which you're gonna do anyway, I mean, personally, I rarely vacuum my driveway, then put CCO all over, you know, get things a little more environmentally friendly anyways, okay. It's, it's, it's a myth, it just isn't a, it, porous asphalt doesn't last as long as impervious. I think it's pretty darn clear that's not true from places where you can go to see them. Porous asphalt installations cost, ah, yes, here's one. Of course, if you, if you put the water into the ground, porous asphalt causes pollution. Hmm. Well, if you get a little bit of oil leakage off of your cars, and you're on a regular parking lot, it runs right off out into the stream. If you let it infiltrate into the porous asphalt, in fact, there's enough micro, enough bacteria down there that they actually chew it up, and it's in small concentrations. And so the evidence from the UNH Stormwater Center is, that just like you take water and you put it into the forest soil, and it cleans it up, that's what happens underneath the porous asphalt parking lot. Uh, porous asphalt is well-suited to parking lots and driveways, but not to roads? I don't know where the heck that one came from. And, and, you know, it does, it doesn't make any sense. And, you know, the, the, the drive, the road down in front of the main mall, where, where I people tell me that they go out of their way to drive there, even though the traffic's worse, they just like driving out, 'cause there's no, you know, the sun comes out, poof, there's no, there's no ice, there's no water.
Now, you probably could, if you were to, to add porous pavement to a pre-existing road, you know, like a skid row or something, that wouldn't fly, because you've, you've got to reclaim the whole.
Well, it's interesting, the, the middle bullet up here does say purposely, when a new parking lot is permitted, you've, you've created something that you didn't need to do. So whenever there's new construction or reconstruction, please try to see if you can get, go porous. Now, your question, interestingly.
I mean, it'll perk down to the old asphalt, but it's really a problem.
And, and you'd think it'd be a problem. Interestingly, the New Hampshire DOT, uh, sorry, Massachusetts DOT has paved 30 miles of Thor 95 with porous asphalt, because one of, one of the beauties of it is, it has a higher coefficient of friction, so not only do you not get water on it, it's actually, you know, even in the, in the wintertime, if you treat it not, if you don't treat it at all, there's less likelihood of, of skidding. If you put it in a parking lot, there's less likelihood of slip and fall. I mean, there's, there's good legal reasons to use it.
But there were over previous.
Yeah, yeah, maybe in the fast south.
Don't know yet.
Definitely sound, you know, way south in Massachusetts, maybe, up here, I'd be pretty.
Well, no, but my point was that, you know, we're, we're that we can always have great roads, great subgrades and everything, but particularly in municipalities, you get a lot of, you know, can't start from scratch all the time, so you're, you're dealing with it, they'll start back.
Existing base, yeah.
And that's why, again, it's the new thing. I mean, when we have the chance to do something new or reconstruction, let's make some progress. Because you, you know, regular repaving, I, I don't think it would be advisable, I agree.
Does every, um, DPW have a vacuum?
I can't.
Do they use that?
I can't speak.
I don't know where, I've never seen one used.
I can't speak for what's right around here, I've been doing some work, uh, the city of Bangor is just starting to have a stormwater utility, and they're putting porous asphalt in, they, they've got two.
Well, I didn't know whether there was another application besides this porous asphalt that they use a vacuum.
Well, you know.
Or is it every, now, if you do that, then you're gonna have to, you're, the taxpayer's gonna have to.
They sweep the streets of sand, but it's with a sweeper, so.
Right, so they'd have to.
Some, some of those sweepers actually have a vacuum attached to them, you know, but I, I don't actually know how common they are in, you know, more rural areas. In cities, I think, they're pretty common.
Tax expense.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not really sure. It's a business opportunity. You know, if we start getting porous asphalt, somebody's gonna create a business, and make some money.
How much, how many three years of this porous asphalt, but the.
None that I know of.
London Dairy Down at the.
I don't believe so.
No, it's not. Is there any difference in the ability to handle loads, impervious versus impervious?
You put string runners into it, so the answer that I get from the, from the engineers, the answer I get from the UNH Stormwater Centers, no. The, the only time, if you're doing a little, let's imagine you're doing a Walmart, and in the back of the store, you've got an area where 18 wheels coming in, turning and.
Every day, yeah.
Maybe you wanna do concrete or something like that there, rather than porous, 'cause it might ravel the surface.
Right.
But that's the only case where I've heard anybody suggest that you really need to think about doing it, doing something that, where, where porous isn't gonna.
Right. But even regular asphalt with 18 wheels over time gets depressions and wears out, so it's, it's not impervious to that.
How long, how, how long has this been in, in use?
Porous has been around for about 20 years. And, you know, and, and not surprisingly, some of the, some of the early installations did fail, you know, they raveled and, and, and that set the whole process back. But now, again, the engineers tell me that we've solved the problem, we've put string runners in, you know, binders and things like that, and it really isn't an issue anymore. And again, the regular stuff fails anyway, so, you know, let's not worry too much about that.
Where, where are the six utilities?
Uh, let's see, South Burlington, uh, there's a couple of Massachusets, I'm not gonna come up with which towns they are in particular, Lewiston, Bangor, I think, I think actually, and I may, if I said six, I was probably thinking Manchester, which is moving in that direction.
Now, didn't Lewiston, one of those main border towns, have a lot of problems with combined sewer, and, and just a real mess that had to be untangled? I was just trying to.
Uh, you might be thinking of Augusta. And Augusta made the decision, instead of separating their, their, their stormwater from the sewage treatment plant, to upsize the sewage treatment plant, and run the stormwater into the plant, not through a stormwater utility, that was just their decision on how to deal with stormwater.
They were trying that in Plymouth about five years ago. They went and take all the stormwater and put it through the surge plant.
Well, most of it's going through the surge plant now, probably. You know, it's just one of those things, it's hard to quantify.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Well, I can kindly, I can make duplication, or how can folks get this online if there are any links?
I can send you a PDF.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
So it's a reasonable-sized file.
That would be wonderful.
Are you happy to do that? And again, if there's, you know, I'd be more than, I'd be thrilled to continue a conversation if you want to think about stormwater utilities or if I can come by sometime, really, if you are talking about...
Well, we have a representative to the select board here, Dick, so he's got his ears on.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Nice presentation.
Months of back and forth trying to get organized here. Do appreciate it.
Certainly, we'll keep impervious parking lots in mind for the future.
So, let me give you, so where's the one that the...
Sun Fairgrounds Road. It's...
Hemmy Commons?
That's what it's called?
No, yeah, that's it. 18 units of elderly...
And it is paved at this point?
Oh, yeah.
Brand new.
And a portion of it is porous, yeah.
The whole park lot's porous, yeah.
And again, I mean...
It looks nice, too.
For that type of installation, with increased coefficient of friction and elderly people, well, it's perfect application. And they're, you know, they're not in slip and fall, the chances of ice are almost, you know, just fabulous.
And they did have to do less, you know, stormwater management. I mean, they'd have some gutters that go into some, you know, rock.
Well, right.
Swales, that's it. That's all they had to do, really, which is nice, opposed to ponds and stuff like that, so, it's good.
It's on Fairgrounds Past Beach.
Yep, Past Beach Hill before the old Fairgrounds.
Okay. Just before you go down.
Yeah, just before the dip.
I'll go out and take a look and take some pictures. That's fantastic.
And it's nice because they did lovely landscaping, and of course, now that won't die because it's poisoned by the calcium chloride.
Right, right.
We did a 319 pervious pavement in Franklin at a beach parking area or by Webster Lake.
Yeah, yeah.
Have some pervious pavement at Rain Gardens.
Okay. Bolond is such a good place for that type of thing. It's a really good idea. All right, well, thanks for your...
Well, thank you very much. Stay in touch.
Yeah, yeah. And so I'll email you a couple things.
Please.
Yeah.
And we'll see about that conference. I'm hoping to get away, probably not, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
A little long. Business incubator public presentation?
Oh, yes. Well, um, there's, yeah, it's coming up on the 18th. I spoke with Dick, our Dick Lewis, earlier today, and the categorization of it is a little bit off. I did some checking with our town attorney and stuff, and it actually does, it is not a government entity, Grafton County Economic Development Council. It's got all of the, you know, state and federal funding. That's all their operating capital. And it's a 501(c)(3), and all their profit goes back in, so they can have revolving loans. So, I got faked out. So, I guess, my bad. I'll take it this time. So we do have to do a site plan review on it. So I have all the information, and I will get it to you in due course. You'll have a chance to look at it. But the meeting has been noticed for the 18th anyway. We had the information enough in advance, so this time we could use the Plymouth record, because we do want to get, you know, public participation and commentary. It's that basically rebuild of the old Richelson site down at the corner. And as you know, that's going to be done at some point in conjunction with P S U for an educational component, business management, and the M B A program, so.
So on the 18th, we actually have a site plan review?
It's going to be, what, three, three-story?
Well, that's, yes, they're looking at three, so we may have to have, you know, whatever comes out of site plan review, it may have to be retro to CBAOs, yeah, people wouldn't relax.
They came before us about a year ago to introduce, yeah, and so since then, they've changed? I'd have to dig deep into my old stock.
Well, they haven't changed so much, but ostensibly at the beginning, it was put forth as two stories. That changed. And that changed after they went away from us, and that's fine, that's their prerogative. But the fact is that we did nail down their identity, and they don't qualify for the governmental use thing, which is set aside from planning board, site plan review, and zoning, so we'll have to take a look at it.
They had a lot of activity on the incubator system about five or six years ago here in Plymouth. And, well, it's changed a lot since then, but there was a lot of controversy about it.
Did you need for the TIF district?
What's that?
The TIF, proposed TIF district, you know?
And I know Bill Hou and, what's his name? There was about four or five people that were really, really interested in doing that, and it sort of died.
Well, this has sort of come back as a different incarnation, because they have sold a lot of tax credits to fund it with community development finance money, but it's hoping to go forward, so we'll see.
Now, is that, is that just downtown property, or is that Tenney Mountain property, too?
No, that's downtown. They purchased it, they being the Grafton County Economic Development Council, purchased it from the state of New Hampshire.
Okay.
So, they're working out the bugs with that. But we'll be having a closer look, so.
All right, moving on to number eight, unfinished and other business for the Tenney Mountain town review.
Yeah, I just put together some notes. I had in your last packet of stuff for the Riverside Landing. I had passed out, or I had mailed out the executive summary of the old corridor study and some of the most recent traffic counts. And I actually had a complete thought the other day, so I sat down, and this is just kind of a stimulus, if you will, to get all of you thinking about what you'd like to see on that corridor study. I have some definite ideas here. So up top is corridor study key components needed, what we need to put out, will we go for requests for proposals, and we figure out how much this is going to cost, and, you know, the requirements for folks who are going to compete to get this job for the town. Then also underneath, I made a list of some resulting associated tasks for us and for the town, fathers and mothers, that are kind of associative with this, or will come after this is in place. So this is just food for thought. I don't know if you want to have a discussion tonight. We're kind of a small group, but if anybody disagrees with what I've got there, if you see other aspects or angles that I haven't mentioned, you know, this is, I'm going to need feedback from you folks to see what you want for particulars, so we can go out there and get a consultant and get this study done.
What are the regulations on, as far as types of businesses, how big they are, how small they are? Can you govern that on, like, the corridor? In other words, they're putting up a 950-square-foot building now, supposedly out here on the traffic circle, as I heard the other night. And, you know, that's a very, very small building for a commercial building.
Oh, oh, oh.
I'm wondering if, in a corridor that you would have to have, I don't know...
A minimum size?
Yeah, a minimum size, 20,000 square foot, a minimum size. I know you can't make, you can't designate the architectural design of a building and stuff like that. That is, you can suggest it, but you can't, like, colors of the trim and all that other stuff. I'm wondering about the size.
Well, that's kind of part of your site plan. On this 900-square-foot building that you were talking about, that's on a very small parcel, and it basically looks like a residential garage. I mean, that particular parcel wouldn't be usable for some huge thing anyway. And I know where you're going. You're going for the piecemeal, the scattered development, not having that kind of stuff, correct? With little things here and little things there, the caulk and cuts.
That's true. And they, you keep flying under the robe on these small businesses, and they don't have to have all the regulations and everything that large buildings have to have, you know?
Well, they've got to meet our zoning, though. I mean, it all comes back to what do we have for zoning if we have...
Right, but zoning, what is zoning? It's a commercial zoning, and you can put up a hot dog stand in a commercial zone, as well as you can put up a Lowe's, right?
Well...
With a mount house in it.
That was a very unusual one, John. Well, I mean, if you look at this paper, I mean, for starters, I think that the board may want to look at developing some design standards. That's where you get your uniformity of design.
They have it on the first one down there on the bottom.
And they shoot that down with, when Lowe's came in, as far as the trim, especially.
I don't know.
The trim was, they were going to try to make everybody with a green trim, and after they looked up to Lowe's...
Well, right, we don't have the authority to tell them at this point, so the heck with us, yeah.
Have you changed that?
We changed the site plan regulations, I guess.
Yeah, I think that would be a real hard nut to crack, because some of these major, you know, national concerns, that's what they built their business on, is the color and the style and stuff like that.
Although, on the other hand, you know, if they want to come in desperately enough, and you have design standards, they're a lot more yielding than they are, I mean, I don't know if you think so, but it's kind of business as usual now conformed to what the town says, if they've got the authority.
Yeah, right.
I mean, there are several McDonald's that are in Freeport...
Oh, yeah, that was the original.
Other locations.
It looked like houses.
That looked like the rest of the buildings in the town, right, yeah.
I guess what I'm saying on that is Freeport, they came in and they almost sold their souls to be in there because of the business opportunities these they have. Plymouth, New Hampshire is on the opposite end of the stick. We're looking for businesses and trying to get businesses in here, and, well, anyway, the way it looks, a lot of your businesses are not too awfully interested in Plymouth. So many national businesses, like Kohl's and a lot of those, they're not that interested in Plymouth. So consequently, I'm not too sure how far we can sort of squeeze them to be the perfect...
Well, we've got nothing in place now. I respectfully disagree. I think Plymouth has got a lot going, and you may not get a Kohl's, but I think with things turning around somewhat economically, nationally, this is the place to do development, because we've got the transportation access. That's why we have to do this corridor study, so we don't kill the golden goose.
But how much land, and I'll come back to this 100 times, how much land have we really got left for commercial use?
When you do an inventory...
That has a high view on the road.
Well, this is the thing, the key components, inventory update, comparing what was developed when that study was done in 2003, and what's been developed in the interim. This is what we're asking the consultant to do. Then, after that, after you see what's happened, and we can get the aerial views through Google, so you can visually compare along the corridor, get an inventory of the available developable lands north and south of Tenney Mountain Highway, and rate those chunks of land. I mean, some are big, some are small parcels, but particularly in light of, well, it's probably all in the flood plain, but is it in the flood plain? Is it in the floodway? Are there a lot of delineated wetlands? And I'd like to see the consultant see how much, for example, if you have six parcels side by side or something, one has maybe 25% of its area that would fit into development, one is more open, less wet. You know, that's the kind of analysis we need to see what is out there. Then you go to the future land use build-out, which is a computerized model and stuff. And that way, we can get a visual picture. And then, if the zoning needs to be changed, for whatever reason, either to allow more, if you don't feel there's enough, or to put in protections or whatever, that's where you see it. If we just go about it blindly, you might as well not even bother, because it won't amount to anything.
I'll get data if we go about it, yeah.
One thing I would like to see is an exit plan on every business that's out there on Tenney Mountain Highway.
An exit plan?
What do you...
Exit plan.
You mean, when they plan an exit of town?
They go out of business, what happens? Okay? That's a real important thing, because there's some businesses that...
Oh, you mean in terms of retrofitting what's already there in the future, or...
What are they going to do with that building after they leave it? What are they going to do at all? They call it the exit plan, so that you don't have all these empty buildings.
That's great. Mark that down, because when we talk about this, again, when we're a bigger group, that's the stuff we need to...
Yeah, yeah. I think it's a good start, though, Shannon.
Well, it's the basics, but I mean, you know, that previous corridor study, which was good, but it just didn't get terribly in-depth.
Could you do me one other favor on that?
It's nine years old, yep.
Is when you hire the guy that's a consultant, don't do what they did for the fire department and hire somebody from Arizona?
You want an indigenous consultant. We'll get one.
Indigenous.
That would be a lot better.
Just one thought. In looking at the executive summary that you handed out a few weeks ago, I mean, like, on page two, it talks about, you know, one of the results of the study, of this study is the development of model design guidelines and proposed new amendments for zoning subdivision and site plan. And I think, I guess, my thought is, before we get too far down the road of doing R F P, maybe we need to kind of take a look at what outcomes and outputs from this 2002 case study were implemented. If they weren't implemented, why not, and were there hurdles?
On that front page, I got it down on my desk. Some were, some weren't. And the basics were done, but...
Two things. Did I ever get one of those?
When, it was mailed to you with the package, that meaning that you couldn't attend? I'll get you one downstairs.
I looked, but I don't think I...
Yeah, I think it was in the package for the...
It should have been, because everybody else got one.
September 20th meeting?
Yep, the last one.
For the September 20th?
For September 20th, so that was a few days ago. That's two weeks ago-ish.
Yeah, like, I was in hospital that time. I'm not too sure.
Okay, well, I don't know if you've gone through all your mail or not. If you don't find it, call me, and I'll shoot you another one. But it's very interesting, the D O T traffic report, the counters, to see the changes.
I wonder if there's anything, plenty of it at the time.
Anybody else got any quick ideas now, or you'll save that for another time? Okay, well, just, just think on it.
Now, can we, can we get those maps and so forth before we get too wealthy filing to it, to see just how much...
Which maps?
Well, a map of what land we have to work with.
Well, we can get Google, we could get Google satellite maps, which show us what is there now. And the corridor study has, the former corridor study has maps from what was available in 2003, so we can do a quick, very unscientific analysis just by looking at it. So that'll be a start.
Is that available to us for the maps and so forth from the 2003 one?
Yep, the 2003 one is there. Did I send that with you or not?
Yeah, just the...
Just the synopsis, yeah. Yep, no, I've got those, and then we can, we can, we get going on this. Because remember, this is going to be kind of in lieu of our master plan work at this point in time. Then we'll get those printed up from Google Earth.
When do you want us to give you input, add or delete on the sum?
Oh, well, we probably won't get back to this till next month, till the next...
Except you?
Yeah, which is...
Support that.
If we have ideas, can we just email you, though?
Oh, sure, yeah, whatever works. Whatever works is fine.
November 1st?
No.
Yep.
Oh, God, we're all getting a lot of work on calendars.
One more.
Next, we're session meeting on 1st, Thursday.
Yes.
No, you're right, it is.
Day after Halloween.
My light is flashing before my eyes. Probably, certainly it's the group's idea, but maybe people want to digest this and this letter from the Holderness Conservation Commission and speak to you later.
That's what you suggested. Maybe we'll discuss it.
I mean, I've looked at it very briefly. I disagree with many of the points, but...
What's there to digest?
We get to number nine, any public comments?
Are you visiting us tonight?
I am, we're busy.
First floor or...
Yeah.
It's usually not this fun.
You missed the last one. You want to go to a fun one?
Good one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Interesting. It brings us to number 10, everybody's favorite.
Can I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned at 7:40.